Would you call the roll, please? Thanks.
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's not on.
Yes.
These are all on.
Ours aren't working either.
Mine are working pretty.
I think they're working now. Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The, uh, tonight, item C is presentation by Councilman Ham of the Zach Taylor Junior Clean Cities Vision Award. And tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Brooks, which is since, Marcus Neiger.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, uh, Councilman Ham wasn't able to be here tonight, but recently ACOG awarded the City of Moore the Zach Taylor Clean Cities Vision Award. And so this has to do with the, our conversion over the years to, uh, natural gas for our sanitation fleet, and then for the project that we did with Spark last year to put a natural gas fueling facility on our public work. So they had a nice ceremony up in Oklahoma City, uh, was well attended, and this was the award that, uh, that they gave us, and, uh, just wanted to present that to the council.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
(applause).
Special thanks to the city manager and all the staff for getting that award.
Thank you.
It wasn't the council who did it, but thank you very much. Okay, item number two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May 21st, 2018. Item B, approve and reappoint, uh, the reappointment of Jeff Arvin, Charles Payne, and Robert Washington to the park board for a three-year term. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $3,195,061.39.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark? Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. Item number three is review, discuss, and receive citizen input and comments regarding the 2018-2019 budget as required by 11 Oklahoma statutes, 17-208, 1992. Do you want to give an overview? Ken, if you want.
Mayor, council, just to give you a brief overview of what's in the budget, we've had individual meetings, we've had a workshop, but just to kind of give you the final, uh, tallies here. Total proposed budget for fiscal year 19 is 109 million, which is within $300,000 of our revised budget for fiscal year 18. The budget in Fund Two for Risk Management has been changed due to moving the HR department to Fund Six, which is our general fund, and, uh, and perhaps, and, well, that. And then the budget in Fund Four for the Geo Street Bonds is for any remaining expenses on the 34th Street Overpass. There are still some relocation costs pending and maybe some other miscellaneous items. The increases in Fund Five, the MPWA budget, are due to the rate increases passed on to us by Oklahoma City. During the summer, we purchased approximately 90 percent of our water from Oklahoma City. A water rate usage increase for usage above 10,001 gallons is included to match Oklahoma City's rates. The increase in the service fee from Oklahoma City is not being passed on to our customers. In the general fund, several of the department budgets are different from the fiscal year 18 budgets. In the general government, some of the professional services budgets have been reallocated to departments that it impacts. The managerial budget now includes the payroll for the Economic Development Director. As stated above, Human Resources now has its own department within the general fund. Proposed cost of living adjustments are 3.3 percent for police, 4.4 percent for fire, and 1.8 percent for general employees. There are proposed fee increases for building and other permits and alcohol licenses, which we estimate will increase revenue by an anticipated $245,000. The special revenue fund, Fund Eight, has a hundred, has a $150,000 budget to finish the other half of the sidewalk project on Silverleaf and Patterson. Other sidewalk projects are being funded in Fund Twelve. Fund Nine, the bond payments are reflected in our debt service fund. Fund Twelve, the dedicated one-half cent sales tax will fund six police vehicles and make the debt payment on the ladder truck and purchase other public safety equipment. Scheduled street projects are Hillcrest and Phase Two of Howard Street and replacing panels in the clubs edition. Scheduled drainage project is in the Falls Edition, and we have 50,000 in each ward for additional sidewalk projects, one of which is in Ward One to link a sidewalk, uh, from Veterans, right off of Veterans Park across Fourth Street. That hit in Fund Thirteen, the dedicated one-fourth cent sales tax has scheduled improvements at Veterans Memorial Park, Westmore Trail Park, and Buck Thomas Park. Construction will continue on Fire Station Number Two. And in Fund Fifteen for DRGR, all budgeted project funds have been budgeted, and due to the timing of the construction, all of these funds may or may not be spent in fiscal year 19. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on the budget? Any questions about the budget? Okay. At this time, I'll declare the budget closed for the public hearing. At this time, we'll recess the public hearing and reconvene the city council meeting. Item Four is Consider Rezoning Application Number RC 971, located in the southwest quarter of Section 14, Township 10 North, Range Three West, being north of Southwest Fourth Street and east of Interstate 35, from C3 General Commercial District to C3 PUD Commercial District, Planned Unit Development and Approve Ordinance Number 88018, application by Malibu's Auto Center, Greg Rushing, Planning Commission, recommended approval of this item 60, Ward One.
Mayor and council, this property is located north of Southwest Fourth Street and east of Howard Avenue. The property was rezoned to C3 General Commercial in September of 2016, and it currently contains an existing residential structure on approximately a quarter of an acre. The applicant is proposing to relocate the residential structure and to rezone this site to C3 as a PUD to allow for a commercial building constructed with shipping containers. Public utilities are available to serve the site, and access is provided by Howard Avenue. Because of the need to reduce curb cuts along Howard, at this location, uh, the access to the on-site parking is proposed to be relocated from Howard to Third Street. Because steel shipping container buildings may not be appropriate in all areas due to the aesthetics and neighborhood integrity, the applicant is utilizing a planned unit development or a PUD to help offset any negative impacts of the proposed development on the character of Old Town and the compatibility with the residential properties, uh, to the north. The applicant is proposing to provide the following amenities as described in the PUD. Uh, the parking lots located on the north, uh, so, I'm sorry, parking lot located on the side and rear of the building screened with landscaping and site-proof fencing to the north. Uh, signage is limited to the wall signs only. There will be no pole signs or electronic signs allowed. Building facade materials consisting of 25 percent brick or stone, 25 percent wood plank siding, and 50 percent painted metal surface and/or glazing. There will be a total of nine trees and 94 shrubs provided, and an interior courtyard will be created with pervious paving and outside seating area approximately over 400 square feet. And if you're curious as to what this might look like, uh, there are elevations on page 83 through 85 of your packet. The Envision More 2040 Plan calls this location to be Old Town Mixed Use Land Use. Uh, the plan emphasizes Old Town's uniqueness and recognizes that in the commercial and mixed-use areas, building form and site design are of high importance. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. Uh, being a PUD, this application conforms to many of the plan's recommendations for aesthetics. It does include, uh, a lands, mix of landscaping, increased open space, access management, and, uh, the reinforcement of the unique character of Old Town by bringing the building to the, uh, to the property lines. The building is proposed with a modern commercial look with elements of the steel shipping containers visible on two sides. Enhanced landscaping is proposed throughout the site. Uh, the plan identifies Old Town as an area to have pedestrian connections throughout by sidewalks. Uh, the, the pedestrian connections will be provided with, through the Howard Avenue Streetscape Project that is currently underway, and the proposed site design does complement the pedestrian bicycling infrastructure, uh, by, by interacting with the streets to a larger degree than normal buildings do. Uh, the plan does call for preserving natural resources as an amenity while also accommodating development, and the applicant has proposed an increase open space of 12 percent on the lot, and that is, uh, compared against the 5 percent that is, uh, regulated by code. Due to this application's use of a PUD to ensure the building form and design with the Old Town area and its support of the overall goals of the plan, an amendment to the plan is not required. Within the Envision More 2040 Plan, specific goals and policies to Old Town were laid out. Uh, this was to encourage development that was sensitive to the unique sense of place that is in Old Town. Although on its face, a commercial building constructed of steel shipping containers may not sound compatible with Old Town, by utilizing a PUD, this application does alleviate many of staff's initial concerns. Uh, the applicant's site plan and amenities provided will help minimize the steel shipping container characteristics while incorporating some of features of the railroad industry and design on the sides of the building that complement the history of Old Town. Staff recommends approval of this application, and again, the, the elevations are on pages 83, 83 through 85 in your packet.
I love it.
Is there an idea of what might go in there, what kind of business?
The applicant is here, and I will have him speak on that.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Will Solon, with Aisling Design, representing Greg Rushing. As far as to the businesses, uh, it's mainly built for a, a professional nature, professional services, mainly office use. Um, there is one, talk of one tenant being a, a salon of nature, um, being the, the larger of the units, um, that is, that's what's been discussed. Uh, we've designed around that, that use specifically, uh, given the scale of the, of the development.
What would be the max occupancy in the building?
Max occupancy, if you're looking at, at business, it'd be 25. Neil.
So I only see about 10 parking spots. How are we going to accommodate that?
The Howard Avenue project does have on-street parking.
Well, that's counting four of the Howard parking. There's only six internal.
Right.
Four of Howard, you're talking about that across the street on that?
Yes, yes. Uh, all of the parking along Howard is public, and so the idea is that, uh, the public can park anywhere along Howard and walk or bike on our new bike lanes, um, to the establishment.
There's no intent to park on Third, though?
No.
The entrance will be on Third.
Correct.
There's no intent to park on Third, correct? Did you get any citizen feedback on this?
Uh, there was no one who showed up to the planning commission to speak for or against.
Is there anyone now that would like to speak for or against it? Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
I'll second. It looks really awesome.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Thanks for bringing your business to more. Item number five is Consider the Final Plat of Belmar, Section Two, a replat of lots five through 12, Block One, Blocks One through Eight, Block Three, located in the southeast quarter of Section 32, Township 10 North, Range Two West, being south of Southeast 34 Street and west of Sinner Road. Application by Belmar Golf LLC, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 60, Sinmore One.
Mayor, council, this property is located north of Belmar Boulevard and west of South Sinner Road. The site is zoned R1 and was previously platted in October of 2010 to include 16 lots within the boundaries of this replat. The applicant is proposing to adjust the lot lines to reduce the number of lots from 16 to 11 in order to increase the size of the lots. Utilities are available to serve, uh, the, the site, um, they're already there, and the existing access is from Vista Drive. Staff recommends approval of this replat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think a motion will be approved.
All right.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number six is Consider Approval of Ordinance Number 881-18, amending Part 14, Chapter Three, Sections 14-301, 14-313, 14-314, and 14-320 of the Moore City Code by adding definitions, amending the permit procedure, adding tiered permit applications, modifying emergency repair procedures, and modifying compliance dates regarding construction of public utilities within the city-owned right-of-way.
Mayor, council, I'd like to introduce Danny Weist. He is the Assistant Community Development Director. He's been in that position for about a year, and he has been doing a lot of work on right-of-way requirements, uh, in the city, so he can explain this further.
Uh, Mayor, council, this is an update to an ordinance that was approved in January of 2017. Um, as city staff began to enact the original ordinance that was passed, um, we saw a need to further break down the permits. Construction in a right-of-way is a very big, broad, um, subject area, and so we found the need to further break it into tiers. Um, the tiers would break construction within the city-owned right-of-way, um, down to the size of the project so that we can more accurately get, uh, the right type of information and do the right type of inspections for the construction, um, in the city right-of-way. Uh, we ran into a few, um, issues where we didn't have enough information because of the one-size-fits-all model that the original ordinance had. Um, we also added some definitions to help, um, with the, um, oncoming small cell deployment that we have a separate, uh, set of regulations that cover, but we added some clarity to the definitions there, um, and then added some more provisions for the emergency repairs, um, to allow for them to contact us after the fact, because a lot of times if there is a, an emergency gas leak, we don't want them to stop and, we want them to just fix it first and then contact, uh, contact us after the fact. Um, and then, um, the original compliance date was 48 hours, and we determined that that is really enough time to be able to accurately fix everything, so we extended that to a more manageable 30 days. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I hope it's better than 30 days if it's an emergency gas leak.
I also hope that.
But everything looks good.
Make a motion to approve?
All right. All right. Thanks. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number seven is Consider Nominating and Appointing Three Members of the City Council to Interview Applicants for Vacant Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment Seats. How many guys were on the planning commission before? Louis? Are you?
Melissa and Danielle.
Okay.
I know Mark Ham, uh, he's not here, but he had an interest in being on this. I personally do not, but I know that he was, he voiced his want.
Mark.
Okay. Somebody make a motion, then.
Uh, Lou, are you okay? Then I make a motion that we appoint Louis, Danielle, and Mark. Those are the three represented.
How many vacant seats do we have right now in the commission?
We have one on the planning commission and one on the board of adjustment. Those can be filled by either, um, one person, they can serve double duty, or you can have two positions where you get to choose two, um, applicants. Uh, and I will say that we do, uh, in order to keep the wards equal, like we have been doing in the past, we would need to select someone from Ward Three. Um, we did go out for, in, uh, applications for about two months. We advertised, advertised for two months. Uh, we've received about six applicants for the planning commission, uh, and three applicants for the board of adjustment from Ward Three. Uh, and I'd also like to put it out there that if the council is, um, willing, uh, we could also interview applicants or consider their applications from the 2017 cycle that happened at the end of 2017. I believe we had two applicants, um, that we could contact to see if they are still interested.
Okay. We have three names. Would you call for the vote, please?
Did we have a second?
Oh, did we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Thank you, and thanks to all the people that serve on those boards. Item number eight is Consider Approval of a One-Year Extension of the Public Works Contract with Silverstar Construction Corporation.
Mayor and council, this is our existing maintenance contract that we've actually been a contractual agreement with Silverstar for well over 20 years. Uh, the only change is to the renewal, there's a 2.6 percent increase, 1.8 percent of that is for the employees' pay raises, and the other 8 percent is for road oil.
Point eight percent, right? Point eight percent?
Point eight, I'm sorry. There's quite a bit of difference in that. Uh, staff would recommend approval. I think that's been a great partnership over the years. The benefit the city receives, we have the expertise and immediate access to any piece of equipment we may need, and you've seen it work in inclement weather and as well as our, uh, residential streets and even arterial streets to some point. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Okay. I have one on, uh, does this cover the FEMA part of the contract that we need?
Yes.
Okay. Cause that's the most important part to me. We've been there, done that several times.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both, and thanks all through. We have a motion. Any other discussion on this? Anybody?
No, I would just add that anytime I've ever called about, um, an urgency or a situation that needs handled quickly, they're usually out there the same day before I get home and drive past it again. So thank you, Steve, for that. You can always count on it.
Yep. Absolutely. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. And thanks for having your business in, I too appreciate it. Item number nine is Consider Renewal of a Contract with a Center of Employment Opportunities in the Amount of $120,000 to Provide One Supervised Work Crew in the Public Works and Parks Department.
Mayor and council, this company provides our tent service for any type of work we may, may need. Mainly it's in, uh, weed eating and, uh, mowing and things of that nature, and drainage channels and right-of-ways and city parks. This partnership has been very beneficial to the City of Moore. Before we entered into this contractual agreement, we used tent services, and I would never recommend that again. But staff would recommend approval. Like I said, it's been a great partnership, and we actually get a beer bang for our buck with this company than we ever have for this type of work.
Make a motion to approve? I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes. And I can say I haven't had too many complaints this year, so they gotta be doing a great job.
We've only had one, one incident ever, and that was taken care of immediately and the individual was removed from the city.
Okay.
That's the only occurrence we ever had.
Okay. All right. Item number 10 is Consider Extending the Current Contract with Apollo Building Systems Incorporated for Construction Management Services Beginning June 4th, 2018 and Ending June 30th, 2019.
Mayor and council, this is more for structures and improvements of that nature, maybe remodels. We've utilized this contract in numerous ways, but anyway, as you're well aware, Apollo has built several of our permanent facilities around town, and staff would recommend approval of this contract.
Okay. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
All right. Thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item number 11 is a consent docket. Item A is Receive and Approve the Minutes of the Regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting Held May 21st, 2018. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $553,684.50.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Lou. We have a, oh, it is a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. This, item number 12 is also a consent docket. Item A, accept the minutes of the Regular Moore Risk Management Board Meeting Held May 21st, 2018. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $178,919.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the city council meeting again. Item number 13, item A, Citizens Form For Items Not On The Agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? There's not another mayor in the country that would ask that. So, it's your only shot. Item B is Items From the City Council or Trustees.
I have a couple of things.[1657.61]